How are we doing there? Thank you. Call the February 22, 2021 City Council Committee to hold an order. The clerk will call the roll.
Orevolo?
Present.
Brereton?
Here.
Flurry?
Present.
Frank?
Present.
Freeman?
Here.
McGee?
Here.
Porter?
Here.
Bradcliffe?
Here.
Snow?
Here.
Stevens? Stevens will be absent. Nine present.
Thank you. Under public comment this evening, Alderman Freeman has asked to have the floor. Alderman Freeman, you have the floor.
Thank you. So I had the occasion this weekend to watch the interview with Mayor Chamberlain on our local 13 W R E X Only the Good News, 7:30 a.m. Sunday morning broadcast, and there were some things said that caught my attention. First one being the mayor's statement of his continuation of his growth plan since becoming mayor and even as an alderman. He stated that a one, two, five, or 10-year plan is necessary for economic growth. Our current mayor likes to focus on industrial growth and stated that, logistically, the large amount of property located between 90 and 20 is prime for industry. The Union Pacific Railroad has said that Belvedere is the number-one railroad location for growth in the next few years, and he welcomes new industry, particularly warehousing and the manufacturing of surgical and optical instruments and food processing plants in conjunction with some Nordic countries. I, too, believe new industry is good for growth, especially since Belvedere seems to have placed all its eggs in one basket, so to speak, by our acquisition of multiple Chrysler plant suppliers, which would leave us holding the bag of a probable abundance of abandoned factories if Chrysler ever decided to permanently close its Belvedere plant location. My concern is that since the mayor didn't specify the locations between 90 and 20 that he envisions for industrial use, prime land for retail and commercial growth may be at risk under his plan. It's hard to know since information is rarely shared with council members, and we are forced to engage hearsay and rumors. If he is speaking of land east of Appleton Road out near Chrysler and the Irene Road interchange, I'm all for it. However, if he seeks to industrialize property west of Appleton out near Walmart, the Genoa Road interchange, and the area across 20 from B H S, I would disagree. This land, in my opinion, is perfectly situated for retail, entertainment, and commercial growth. Prime property for a hotel, some eateries like maybe a Cheesecake Factory restaurant, a Bob Evans, IHOP, Cracker Barrel, a machine shed, a steakhouse, or retail like an outlet mall, Kohl's, or Target pop-up stores, or a grocery chain, Valley Produce, Woodlands, or Highlander. The possibilities are virtually endless with the location and the available land. As the saying goes, if you build it, they will come. Any of which is desperately needed by a community that has been left behind. As this type of growth continues to happen all around us, Roscoe, Loves Park, Machesney, Marengo, Woodstock, and even north of our border in places like Beloit and Bellevin, a town with only 8,000 people but has all the quality-of-life amenities we can't seem to acquire. This goes hand-in-hand with the mayor's next statement as to the fact that we have anywhere from 1,200 to 1,500 young professionals that come here to work but go home to the east side of Rockford to live. It may be partially due to his assessment that we need housing for them, but I think the larger picture is that why would they want to live in Belvedere when they have to travel to Rockford for virtually everything they can't get at our local Walmart? Another question posed to the mayor also caught my attention. When asked about our COVID response, he said that we have not enforced all the rules as strictly as they may have been enforced. He stated that all the leaders of government made a decision as to whether the governor's plan was legal, and their take was that if they made everyone do all the things that the governor wanted them to do, and a current lawsuit against the governor was successful, it would open up a liability within municipalities to be on the hook for making amends to our businesses. Instead, he claims to have worked together with all the leadership in the community to do the best job we could. I'm curious as to exactly who he considers the leaders of government and leaders in the community. Did he and Owen Costanza merely get together and make this decision? Doesn't it open up more liability if the governor's orders are deemed legal and people ultimately died as a result of nonenforcement of his orders? Could this explain why our tiny county of Boom once had the highest COVID positivity rate in the entire state? When asked by Alderman Porter about this and our mitigation efforts or lack thereof at a council meeting, the answer given by Mayor Chamberlain did not include that he and a select few had unilaterally made the decision to virtually ignore state orders, but he rather said that it was not within our jurisdiction to enforce, so to speak. He said it was only the State Police and Health Department that could do that. I have since learned that the I M L had actually sent all municipality attorneys enforcement ordinance samples as to how they could present an enforcement ordinance to councils. We were never given the opportunity to review one, let alone vote one up or down. My issue isn't, is partially with our lack of mitigation efforts, as some businesses went by the rules set forth by the state while others did not. However, my main issue is that we were lied to by the mayor himself when we questioned it, and I cannot let that stand. Thank you.
Thank you, Marcia. As you know, we don't respond to public comment, but I will respond at the end of the meeting about your allegations. So let's move ahead. Okay, up next, we have Pam Lopez with her Growth Dimensions monthly report. Pam, you have the floor.
Thank you and good evening. I want to provide you the, I think this is my first update of the year, so feel free to ask me any questions. But I think we had sent out a summary of our last year's accomplishments via email to everyone, but if you'd like to have that copy again, we can further provide that. We have had a lot of activity so far. We've already submitted two projects, and one is in the pipeline. Project Kelly is a dry storage facility. Project Top Care, a manufacturing company, looking to manufacture automotive and sewing components. We're also following up with conversations we had with a site visit last year called Project Spectrum. It's a German manufacturer that visited last year. And just, like I said, just a lot of activity. Those are just some of the major projects. We've been also working with Stellantis. As you know, that Peugeot and Fiat Chrysler Automotive had merged last year, I'm sorry, last month. We've been facilitating discussions with them in order to not only sustain the automotive industry in northern Illinois, and it doesn't just affect Belvedere or Boom County, it affects northern Illinois because their workforce comes from a 70-mile radius at very minimum. So get everyone, people from Indiana and Wisconsin coming to work here for the automotive industry. We have been, we met with representatives from Stellantis this past week with our local, our regional partners, and our state officials to talk about and present an overview of our workforce, our profiles, our incentives, and general comparisons with other states. What we want to do is we want them to walk away with feeling confident that we can handle the next project that's down the pipeline. That will definitely have electrical vehicle-type of components. We want to make sure that we're prepared for those. We want to make sure that they think that we're a serious candidate for those future vehicles. So that's what we're doing with the automotive industry in order to sustain them, and not only sustain them, but to help them grow in this community. Another area that we've been working hard on is the venture program. As you know, last year, we started the venture program, and this was our region's respond to develop aspiring and existing entrepreneurs in our community. We also look to connect resources with our entrepreneurial network and to build a comprehensive ecosystem for the greater Boom County area. So in 2020, we had 11 participants participate in what we call a fast-track training program. This was a, we did this through the support of a grant that we received through the Kaufman Foundation and a number of sponsors. Because Growth Dimensions is not a 501(c)(3), the city of Belvedere was able to receive the grant on our behalf. It was $20,000, and they passed it through to help us pay for trainers, marketing, and technology. We'll hold two fast-track training programs this year, one in the spring and one in the fall. Those are still planned. We are seeking participants, and we are also seeking support from existing entrepreneurs to help us sustain the program. Our next step is to build an ecosystem of resources that are available to businesses. So Source Finder is a product that Source Link makes, and it is a resource supported by the Kaufman Foundation. It'll help Growth Dimensions build an ecosystem of resources available to businesses. So this will give businesses access to assets that are available in our, in our region and help them at any point of their process in their business. So their life cycle, sometimes it might be in the beginning of the business, might be middle to help them sustain, might help them grow. So it doesn't matter where they are in their process of their business. We want to provide some comprehensive resources that are available and accessible to them. This includes financing, building, information, legal, training resources, business planning, and so on. Whether they, like I said, they can be a startup and they can be existing businesses. In addition, we're looking after this, with this product, this will provide us with a report and analysis of where we are and some key findings of our area, and also some recommendations on what we need to do in order to further help our businesses in our community, some gaps in services. Because of our previous success, the Kaufman Foundation has extended, extended a new award of $15,000 to implement this product, product, excuse me, to be completed by the end of June 2021. And so, once again, we are asking, and you'll see that on your, in your packet today, we're asking the city of Belvedere to accept these funds on behalf of Growth Dimensions to support businesses in our community. And then the last thing I wanted to bring up is a project that we've been working on for marketing. So we're working with a production company that's going to help us produce social media clips as well as highlight our logistical advantage and our quality of life in our community. It's almost at its completion, so once it's available, we'll, we're going to be excited to show you clippings of that. Can I open up a question there?
Questions? For Pam? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
I wanted to share something with you folks. They, we had about 2,600 people vaccinated Saturday and Sunday, and at times it wasn't pretty because we found out at the last minute that we could get extra vaccine, and we got the vaccine. And so they were doing it at two different locations, and they had some issues with having enough volunteers at first. Saturday was just so crowded at the Keenage Center that they, some people had to wait in their cars or stand outside for a while. Bottom line is, the comments that were negative were very few, and quite frankly, the comments that were positive were substantial because people just wanted to get vaccinated. And so, you know, the first time you attempt to do something with new partners and new people trying to help, it doesn't always go as logistically perfect as you want, but we achieved a very high level of vaccinations, which really, when you look at the numbers, and I had a conversation with Amanda this afternoon, of the identified seniors, we've already done the nursing homes, we have reached approximately now, we have about 25% of those who identified that they want to take the vaccine, left to vaccinate. So that's a, that was a good result. And I'm proud of everybody that volunteered and pitched in and tried to help, and I heard wonderful comments about our police department in handling the traffic. JM over there, so thank you guys very much. So we'll move on. On reports of officers, boards, and special committees, under finance and personnel and finished business, there is none to discuss this evening. Under finance and personnel, new business, there is a budget and finance department update. Ms. Tobin?
Just a couple of updates regarding some grants. Last week, I did submit the new, it was round five of the abandoned property programs grant. We're eligible for up to $75,000, which is what I applied for. Last time, we received $40,000. So it's hard to know exactly depending on how many different entities apply as to if we'll get approved for a grant and for how much. So I will keep you posted on that. The Cures Economic Support Grant for our businesses, we were awarded an additional $15,000. The state had called a couple of weeks ago and had asked if we could use more funds, and of course, I said, well, sure, we'll take whatever you give us. So we had asked for an additional $15,000. So we were able to award an additional $7,500 each to the YMCA and to Council on Aging. So in total, they each received $10,000. So we were really happy about that. So the total we received from that grant is $365,000 now. Going on to the spreadsheets that you had in your packet, you'll see the monthly revenue comparables that I show you. Still trending about the same. Everything's on track as far as sales tax for the most part. Extremely high local use tax, which is our internet. Sales income tax is good. I also included, you'll see in your packet a spreadsheet with the different utility taxes. The gas utility tax, you can see on that top line where it says municipal gas use tax. That's the revenue that's come in from the new gas tax that you approved last spring. So so far to date this fiscal year, we're at $515,194.98. The line below that, that just says municipal tax, that's our standard gas tax that we were receiving before. So we've just been breaking that out. The electrical utility tax is the, the lines below that where you can see last year compared to this year. You will see, especially in May and June, which is when most of your businesses were, were shut down due to COVID, you will see the, the decrease there. And then the telecommunications tax as well, fiscal year 20 versus 21. And that one is trending low, but that's for other reasons that, that are not related to COVID, and I can discuss that in our budget process. So if anybody has any questions, I can take questions.
No questions? Okay. And we'll move on to National League of Cities Innovation Ecosystems Grant. And again, did you have questions? Tom, I didn't see your hand. Sorry.
Yeah, so this, these three taxes together, this is the complete utility tax here, right? Correct?
Correct. Yep.
Anything else, Mr. Porter? Okay, thank you. Pam, are you going to do the ecosystem grant? Or is Becky going to talk about that? It's kind of a teamwork thing.
So next on the agenda, as Pam was just telling you about, is the National League of Cities Innovations Ecosystems Grant, and this is similar to the grant that was approved that they were awarded last year that just had to funnel through us. So at this time, we'd be requesting a motion, I guess we'd be asking for a motion to approve the $15,000 grant through the National League of Cities as a pass-through to Growth Dimensions.
I'll entertain a motion of that effect. Motion by Snow. May I have a second, please? Second by Flurry. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor? Yes, Alderman Porter, please proceed.
So do we have a exact plan for this grant, then?
We do, or Pam does. That was, she kind of just explained it a little bit, but I'm sure she can go into detail.
There's a product called Source Finder that this is specific, this grant is specifically for, to provide, Source Link is the company, and Source Finder has, provides, basically, they'll sit down with who, a group of people that we identify in our community to, that provide resources to the community, to entrepreneurs, and then we highlight different assets that are available, currently available, and they will, we'll be able to walk away with basically a comprehensive spreadsheet that focuses on what resources are available to startup businesses, to existing businesses, if they're looking to grow, if they're looking to sustain themselves. And this will be very comprehensive, and it would have been great if we had this before COVID, quite honestly. But it's, it's a place that we all can go to, to tap into those resources available. So if a business comes to you and say, you know what, I'm struggling, I need help in this particular area, you'll be able to go to this list. And this list will be available on our website, could be available on the city's website, could be available anywhere. But it'll be a comprehensive list and resources with hyperlinks to those resources and materials that they would need in order to help them through that process. And then we'll also come walk away with a report to see where the gaps are and where do we need to develop some services in our community. So if there's services that somebody has to go to Chicago area or outside the state in order to receive it, how can we bring those here? You know, so it'll help us identify what those are and where we can get those. We are working with regional partners in order to develop maybe a more interactive online tool so they'll be able to put the information online. It's more costly. So what we'll do is, this will help us come with this information, and we'll be able to maintain that locally. So Growth Dimensions will maintain it.
There's no questions or comments? We had a motion in the second. Yes, Alderman Frank, please proceed.
I was just going to say, would we still have to fund this additionally each year?
No. This is a one-time cost, and we'll maintain that.
Okay.
Any additional questions or comments concerning the grant, or excuse me, motion now on the floor? Yes, please do.
So the $15,000 is all from the grant, so there, we're not asking for any additional resources. Just wanted...
But we want to continue that program?
Yes, so we'll, we'll do that through Growth Dimensions. It'll, we feel it will be a minimal cost for us to maintain it.
Any other questions or comments for Pam? Are you, if that's the case? All those in favor of approval, will when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay. Thanks, Pam.
Orevolo?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Bradcliffe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Okay, a motion is passed unanimously of those present this evening. Thank you very much. Move this to item C, which is financial year 2022, the administration capital and personnel budget.
So you have quite a few documents that you would have received in your packet. The first one that I want to start with, and I'm going to pull that up right now, is going to be, it's called the General Fund Summary. It's a one-page... So I don't have to, all right. Thank you. All right, this might work better for me. Okay, so this one-page document, this basically gives you a snapshot of what we're looking at in our current fiscal year and what I anticipate ending with at the end of this fiscal year on April 30, 2021. So you'll see our beginning balance as of May 1, 2020 was $9,35,083 in the general fund. So our estimated general fund balance as of 4/30 is $11,655,000. So we're talking a surplus of $2,619,917. That's our current estimate. Here are your reasons for that surplus. Normally, you would not see this. If you recall, the municipal gas tax, which we just talked about, was approved right before the budget was approved, so it was not included in the budget. We sold the Manly parking lot, which is now also included in here. You had the Cures Grant, which was huge. That was $1,055,000 that we were not anticipating to receive, that we were able to receive from federal funds. And then we have capital holdbacks. These are all the capital expenditures that your department heads did not spend during the fiscal year, but were included in the budget. So you have all those. Another reason your balance is so high is that there was no transfer for Logan Avenue. So if you remember, there was 1.2 million set aside for current fiscal year to go into capital to start to pay for that project, and we did not have to do that transfer because Rebuild Illinois came in with those funds, and we'll be paying for Logan Avenue as well as M F T. So that's money that you wouldn't normally still be seeing in your general fund, but is there because we didn't have to spend it. So down below here, I just kind of highlight this 11, 655 represents just over eight months of general fund reserves. The city policy is to maintain three to six months of reserves. Some of these funds have been earmarked for capital infrastructure projects. Currently, there is $900,000 in the reserves scheduled to be spent on Appleton Road, as long as that project gets to go through, right, Brett, for fiscal year '22. The city also has enough reserves now that they can fund the, the entire Harrison Avenue reconstruction project, if you so wish, or a portion of the Fifth Avenue Storm Sewer bypass project, all while still maintaining a healthy balance in the general fund. And my recommendation has always been to not fall less than $6 million in our reserves. That, that represents a little over four months of reserves, and that's where I'm comfortable. Just my opinion. But, so that's always been my, my thought on that. So, so you'll have some things to talk about as well as with your Public Works Director as to how you want to, how you want to allocate those funds. If you recall, when we adopted, or when we approved the ordinance to increase the Home Row sales tax and some of these other gas taxes, your M F T tax, it was the anticipation to try and use as much of that as possible for road projects. So that's why it's been sitting there. So... Do you have a question?
I have a question for Brett. So Logan Avenue, aren't we going to have a balance beside the $1,200,000? Isn't there an extra amount that we will owe past the M F T?
Well, the, the estimated cost of, of Logan was $2 million, and the plan was to use the local funds for the majority of that cost, but then we were, we got the grant through the state, and that grant value is about 1.7.
Right.
So we've got, we've got that in the budget plus another, anticipating another $300,000 in M F T funds for that project. That project is currently under review with I dot, and once we get done with those reviews, then I'll be updating council on where we're at with cost estimate and schedule and so forth for that project.
Thank you. So, so this is not even getting into our new budget year yet. I just wanted you to be able to understand the numbers and kind of where we stood going forward as we start to talk about fiscal year '22. So we will move on to another document. It'll be a spreadsheet... It'll be a spreadsheet, it's a one-pager that says General Fund Budget Recap, fiscal year, I think it says 2022 at the top? Fiscal year '22, yeah. One-pager. So this just breaks down our revenues and expenditures in the general fund, as it stands right now. Obviously, this is, this is a draft, it's a working document. Your yellow is your, I'll try and make this a little bigger for you. We have our revenues, we have our expenses, we have our bottom line, coming out ahead still at $25,593. So this would make a balanced budget. And this shows us, as we move through the document, this shows us using $900,000 of reserves toward Appleton. So that is included in your revenue and your expense number, using that money. Alright. We can move on, if you'd like, to General Fund revenues. That's a, a bigger document, it would be, there should be 51 pages, front and back, for those of you looking at it on paper. Alright. First pages are just a summary. Just kind of breaks down the different revenues. We can get into them, line item by line item down here, starting with our real estate taxes. As you know, these did not change. So these have, have stayed the same for the last three years. I'm just going to keep moving through, I'll try and explain them as best I can. If you have a question, just stop me. Hotel motel tax. I lowered this one a little bit, just because of COVID. Not as many people are traveling or staying places. We only have one tell, one hotel that submits to this tax anyway, but we anticipated that to be a little bit lower. I'll go on to the next page. Auto rental, similar situation. Our revenues had been a little over 8,000, but due to COVID, they are significantly lower this year. I'm expecting them to come back a little bit, but not to the extent that they were. You're not having as many people traveling, renting cars, things like that. So this revenue, I anticipate to be lower than normal. Your municipal infrastructure maintenance fee. This is one-third of the telecommunications tax. So when that utility tax comes in, two-thirds of it stays under the utility tax, one-third of it comes over to the municipal infrastructure maintenance fee. It's a state statute that has set them up separately. You'll notice this one is a little bit lower, and it continues to drop every year. This is more people getting rid of their landlines and going to cellphones. Cellphones are charged the tax, but they are not charged for data plans, and they are not charged for any voice-over IP systems. So any of your companies, anybody who has a voice-over IP, there is no charges on that. So that's where we're, we're losing a lot of this revenue. Next. Our state income tax, actually doing really well. Much, much better than the state anticipated at the beginning of COVID. This has stayed steady. The unemployment dispersments that have gone out have, have really helped us because people are taxed on those revenues. So that has helped. And what they have found is, the majority of people with higher salaries, actually, their jobs were not really affected through COVID. It was your lower-income people that were mostly affected. So it didn't affect the income tax as much as they originally thought it was going to. So you'll, you'll see this number here, the estimate by the IML. These are the numbers that I received from the state, and it just depends. This year, I didn't get them until February 1st. They were late because of COVID, and they were really trying to make sure that their numbers were accurate. So I rely on those numbers to help us when we're doing the budget. So you'll notice this $110.90 figure. This is your per capita that they are suggesting that you put into your budget for this revenue. So we take the 110.90 per person, and you times that by our population. We're still going off of our, our original population here of 25,585. And then that's how you come up with this, this estimate. Okay, next page. Home Rule Sales Tax. So this one is doing better than I thought, due to COVID. It's still not back where it should be, comparison to, to last year. Here again, your, your Home Rule Sales Tax doesn't include some of the items that your normal sales tax does. You know, cars are not taxed on the Home Rule Sales Tax. Food, prescription medications, things like that, that are taxed on the, the regular sales tax. So these are more of the, you know, anything that's, has a license, a boat, things like that. So you're, so any of those kinds of purchases are where you see here. So there may, must not be quite as much of that going on right now. Alright, next one. This is your municipal sales tax. This is your regular sales tax. I have it down just a little bit from last year, just being cautious and conservative. Just kind of waiting to see how it trends out. There are going to be some major changes to the local use tax, which will affect our sales tax rate, but we don't know what that is yet, or how it, it's too hard to predict. So we have not made any changes to the sales tax. So what's going to happen, and you'll see it when I pull up the local use tax. So right now, everything that's being paid, all your online sales tax, your Amazons, everything like that, is being paid through local use. The state collects it, and then we get a percentage of that. The state collects the 6.25%, and then we get a percentage. So what's going to happen, the new law that went into effect January 2021 allows the local governments to collect that above and beyond 6.25%. So now, we're going to be able to start collect the 6.25 to the 8.25. The state's going to be collecting that and returning it to the municipalities. So it is going to be an increase for us, but it's, it's too hard to predict to know exactly what that number is going to be. So for right now, as I move on to the next one, which should be our local use tax here. There it is. So for right now, the state is suggesting that we keep the, those revenues budgeted under local use tax. So if you move on to local use tax, which is your page 10 of 51, you'll see that they're suggesting that we use 44.50 per person, which significantly increases this revenue. You're looking at 1.138 million. But they're anticipating some of this, this revenue will start to go down, will decrease, but that you're going to see the increase on the sales tax side. But since nobody knows what that's going to look like that yet, they're just suggesting that we leave it here for right now. So this, this should, this should be helpful for us, especially in some of those loopholes with those online sales, where we really weren't seeing anything. Let's see, we'll move on here. Local Motor Fuel Tax. This is another one that I have decreased slightly. Oh, question?
Just, we just skipped this one page here. I noticed it said zero, but it says sales tax to developers. Is there still any of that going on with anybody else?
There is, there is not, I'm sorry. There is nothing, not going on. Our last payment was in fiscal year 14, and that would have been for ShopCo, Culvers, those, those businesses. We have not had anything since then. Okay. Back to, yeah, Local Motor Fuel Tax. Like I said, you'll see that I did decrease it, just in anticipation that even as, as the situation with COVID gets better, I'm still anticipating that some people's lives are going to be different. They're going to be working from home more, maybe still not traveling as much as they would. So just being conservative here, I have decreased that revenue. I just, I did make a note here that you'll see January 2020 compared to January 2021, in our two tollway gas stations, where, which generate the most revenue, are down 30%. So that's something to take into consideration as we move forward here. So, I hope I'm wrong, but I'm just trying to be conservative. Next page. Cannabis Tax. So this is the first time that we've been budgeting for this tax. Here again, this is another one through the LGDF, our Local Government Distribution Fund, that goes off of per capita. So the, the figure that we've been given by IML to use is 93 cents per person for this fiscal year, which comes out to 23,794. So as you can see, this is the cannabis tax, there's a cannabis regulation fund, and then 8% of those revenues are then transferred to the Local Government Distribution Fund, and then distributed to local governments. So, since this is a pretty new tax, we'll be, you know, watching this to see what it does.
Can you use that tax for, is there a select expenditures we can use it for?
I have been reading up on that, and I'm not sure if the chief knows anything more about that, or the city attorney. I have seen in a couple different places that it can be distributed into the general fund, which is where we have it right now. I've seen where it's supposed to be used towards some type of drug rehabilitation, you know, something like that. We're going to have to look at that a little bit farther, and see what it can be used for. Like I said, for right now, it is going into the general fund, it's a small amount. But yeah, we'll have to research that and, and figure out what we should be spending that on.
Question with, I thought I heard on the news that Wisconsin's going to legalize the marijuana trade, and apparently, a lot of, like, over 50% of our revenues are from out of state. Any idea whether that $23,000, $24,000 could actually decline because we're going to lose state?
It possibly could, just because our location, being so close to the state line, you, you could be correct. But, but the way that the, I don't know though, because the way it works right now is everything funnels through the state, and it's divided equally per capita. So if, if ours was only based off what we sell in Northern Illinois, you could be right. Maybe be since we're, you know, we're put into the pot with the entire state, maybe we wouldn't even notice it as much. So that'll definitely be something to follow, though. Okay, we can keep going here. Replacement Tax. These are the taxes that your corporations, your partnerships, your trusts, this is what they pay. This goes through the state, and then a percentage comes to the city. And this tends to fluctuate, it's a little bit harder to gauge. They're anticipating it to be higher than last year, but lower than fiscal year '20, which is how I've budgeted here. Fiscal year '20 was almost 600,000. Last year, we budgeted 450,000, so we're, we're right in the middle there. Alright, move on. Replacement Tax Distribution. This is just a portion of that replacement tax, per state statute, that goes back to, to pay the police, fire, IMRF, and library. It's part of their retirement benefits. So this money gets distributed to police and fire pensions, IMRF, which stays in your general fund, and then the portion goes to the library, because we collect on behalf of the library for this. Next, our business license. It's trending a little bit lower this year, possibly, you know, due to COVID. So we, I have it trending just a little bit less than last year. Here again, just being conservative. Liquor license fees. So this one, you know, we do anticipate, here again, I try and be somewhat conservative with only putting two new licenses down. I know there are, you know, a few more gaming establishments in the works, so depending on when those new businesses apply for liquor licenses, can, could, could make this number higher, but just being conservative. Our next one is our amusement machines. This would be our gaming machines. Here again, we increased from allowing five machines to six machines, plus the increase in the number of permitted establishments, so we're expecting this revenue to increase as well. So we have budgeted, went from 85,000 to 100. Next, we have court fines. And this one always gets a little tricky. Obviously, this year was extremely low. Court wasn't even in session for a few months, at least. And then it's been slow to come back. So these revenues are, are extremely low for this year. I'm anticipating next year for them to at least be higher than this year, but still not back to the rates that they were before COVID. And this one tends to fluctuate based on the activity through courts, the number of tickets written, all that. Alright, next, we got parking fines. Those were increased in 2018, if you recall, so that's why there's such a, a jump from 17 to 18. Some of that's, a lot of it's weather-related. Seems like most of the tickets are in the winter with snow. People live in their cars on the street, so there, a lot of it's weather-related. Seized vehicle. This one fluctuates a little bit as well, just like the court fines do, as you'll notice. So it's basically going off of numbers that we were seeing for this year, is how I budgeted for next year. Engineering. This is a hit or miss. Sure.
Can I ask one question here? For the seized vehicles, are these seized, are these vehicles seized before a person's convicted or, or charged? And if they are found not guilty, or the charges are dropped, are they reimbursed for these fees?
I can address that one.
Okay, I was going to say, there are times, yeah.
The seized vehicles that we're talking about in this aspect are different than what are called Article 36 seizures, which are drug-related. These are impounds that are virtually always, and correct me if I'm wrong on this, chief, but they're almost always as a result of a DUI or somebody driving without suspended license. So, so long as there's probable cause for that arrest to be made, the vehicle is seized, and then the defendant can essentially bond the vehicle out by just paying our, our impound fee. On very rare occasions where it's found that the officer lacks the probable cause, or there was a mistake, yes, we do refund those fees. But otherwise, they do pay the fee, and they get their vehicle back after it's paid.
So and that's $300 is what the seized vehicle fee is? Yeah, per vehicle. Engineering fees for subdivisions. This, this is one of those where the revenue and the expenditure offset each other. We budget 10,000 on the revenue side, 10,000 on the expense side. Sometimes there's activity, sometimes there's not. Video gaming. Average here is 32,150 a month, and that's what the current average is when the machines are on. This is assuming, this revenue is assuming that they stay on, and that they're, they're not turned off again. I did not increase it yet, even though I know we have some new establishments coming in. I was conservative about that. This is a known number, this is a good number, and so I left it as it is.
In the world of the sixth machine, did we find a lot of places did actually pick up the, the sixth machine? Or did they just leave it at five unless they had a large draw?
We've had, and the city clerk could maybe answer that better than I could.
I think most places did pick it up.
Yeah, we've had people come in and pay their additional $500 for the sixth machine, so. Next, our cable franchise fees. This is another one of those that has started to decrease, again, in recent years, as people are getting rid of cable and streaming, their Hulu and their, their Rukus. are getting rid of cable and streaming, their Hulu and their, their Rukus and, and everything else, their Netflix. They are getting rid of cable. So this is another one of those revenues that, that we're probably gonna see continue to decrease. Comcast fees. We don't have any budgeted for next year. You'll notice the revenues that we did receive though, back in 16, 17, 18, those are the revenues that paid, that helped or did pay for the new cameras and the equipment in here. That's what those fees are for. So. You what? Well, we did, but, well, yeah. That's what the, we're giving these for, is to help with equipment. Next, we have our birth certificates, death certificates. That's pretty close to, we budgeted pretty close to where we were for our actual for 20. Next, our accident fire reports. Budgeted the same as, pretty close to what our actual was for 20, even though it is lower this year. Annexation plat fees. This is one of those still, again, where we budget on the revenue and the expense side and sometimes we don't spend either one. Just cancels each other out. Tipping fees. This is another one that tends to get, become difficult to budget for. This has to do with the amount that the city's paid per ton by William Charles. And it just depends on what kind of activity and road projects are going on and how busy, how busy they are. So some years, you can see, back in 2015, it was almost $180,000. Fiscal year 20, we were at 44,000. So our first 10 months of this current fiscal year, we're already at 52,265. So I did trip budget that at 62,718. Yes?
I'm just curious, on the tipping fees, is there somebody here that monitors that for, or do we just kinda trust them, you know, to be honest, on how much they actually use?
They, they have to provide us reports every single year, or I'm sorry, every single month. And Brent sees those as well, correct Brent?
Yes, and then they have to comply with the state too. So they got, the numbers are all certified through the scales and everything through the state and the reporting there, so then we get a copy of those documents.
And what's interesting too is our auditors check those very closely. Last year, we had one month where we had a zero. We actually had another one this year that was a zero. And they pulled that out and they, they contacted William Charles and wanted documentation as to why we didn't receive any funding. So, so there is quite a bit of monitoring going on right there.
Everybody gets a piece of that ad and sure everybody watches it.
Okay, next. These are our fuel charges. These are the revenues that we collect from our outside organizations. Boone County Sheriff, Council on Aging, Water Sewer, since they're not part of the general fund. These are, they're billed every month for the gas that they use for the city. Interest income. Obviously with COVID and everything that happened, our interest rates have plummeted. So I am anticipating not much of a return on most of our investments. So you'll see our anticipated revenue is back down to about our 2014, 2015 rate for this year. We're working on it. We do have, IMET has been seeing some good resort, results. That's our Illinois Metropolitan Investment. That's our, our municipalities that pool, it's an investment pool. And I have been putting more money in there because they are seeing some better returns, but those are more long-term. That's a one to three-year fund that we put our money in, so. But the, the returns are much better. But obviously, you gotta space the money out. We can't put all of the city funds in there. That would be a no-no, so. But, um, yeah, so we'll keep watching that. This is our miscellaneous. Nothing really different here. I'm actually anticipating a little bit lower. You'll see, I didn't plug anything in for the reimbursement community service. We have not been providing that program right now. Once we switched our vendors who had, who cleaned this building, they've been, we've been in discussions with the probation department and so has that company, but we just haven't, they haven't come up with a, a plan going forward yet. So I'm not anticipating that revenue this year.
Pool tabs at the top, or am I misreading that?
No, you're correct. Pool tabs. It's a, it's another gambling revenue that we receive from the state. Pool tabs would come from the VFW? Yes. The Moose. Although Moose is in. Are they, okay, so the Moose in.
Actually, the VFW is in the county.
VFW's county, Moose's city. Okay. So yeah, it's the pool, yep, yeah. You pull it off and see if you want any money. Most people don't. Oh, okay, yep. Well, good. Now everybody knows what pool tabs are.
I have a question if you can increase this amount, because I was emailing Brent. Hopefully in the wintertime, you can have announcements in the shopper, so the, anybody that's young are to, able to shovel off snow for the elderly. So I got one call. And that really expanded my knowledge in saying, maybe other people have trouble.
That's a good idea.
So I don't know if you can, I don't know what that increase can go to, so we can remind people every year in the shopper.
We can do that. We have another line item for, for publications and things, so it could, it could go, definitely go under something like that.
Thank you.
Community service. Okay, next. Operating transfer in. This is what I was talking about earlier. If the Appleton Road project is to take off, we would be, and the budget is where it stands right now, we would be using 900,000 from the reserves to help pay for that project. Next, we got the, we're going to some police revenues here. This is the tax levy, obviously, which stays the same. We have grants. You see the Department of Justice, the VEST grant, the IDOC traffic grants, and the COSAP grant is in here. It's in here on the, this is on the revenue side and then the officer is also in here on the expense side. So, just so you are aware, it is, this is a draft. It is in there right now. Court fines. The auditors had asked us to break this out. This one was under miscellaneous with some other revenues and they had asked us to break this out into its own line item. So this is your DUI fund, your police vehicle, the warrant fees, the citation, rest agent, highway hireback, and drug enforcement. And next is the sex offender registration. Then we have what's left in the miscellaneous. There's some training reimbursement, some false alarms. School reimbursements for. We got equipment sold, donations. And if I'm correct, Shane, the, the big amount under donations, that 53,000, that was the donation for the cameras, correct? For the body cameras, yes. Yeah. So that's why that number's so high. Question?
Do we just have one school resource officer now or do we have two? I thought I saw on the news the other night, we have two.
Each school has one, but however, this year, they're not in the schools because of COVID. Right. City has, yeah. City has one at BHS. The county has one at North, normally.
I thought they said that there was one at the middle school too, or?
Shane says no.
Becky, I have a question. This might be for Brent, but it's the police range rental. Do we pay the sheriff's office for the police range rental?
Nope. Throughout the year, we'll have departments that rent our range and those funds would be considered revenue that we get from other departments renting our range out, which is meant to offset some of the costs that it takes to operate the range.
Thank you.
And this is our school resource officer reimbursement. City receives 70% of the salary and benefits that split over 10 monthly payments. This year, we have not received any payments because the kids hadn't been in school enough, so. Next, we got fire. Property tax levy, it's the same. Fire grants. We only budget if they are guaranteed revenue. We don't have anything guaranteed right now, yet. So, so we'll leave that a zero. That way, we're, we're being conservative there. Miscellaneous. This is their inspection fees and plan reviews. And we move on to road and bridge. Levy's the same. This was the sideways drivewalk lot grading. This is now being done by community development, so that's a zero. Miscellaneous, this is the payment for street department mechanics performing labor on other departments' vehicles. Expense reimbursement. These are insurance claims that we get reimbursed on if equipment gets damaged or they run into a railing or something like that. Yeah. All right. The expense reimbursement, fuel, we don't use that line item anymore. Sale of assets, that's when we sell a vehicle. Street lighting, same levy, 210,000. Here we are with the utility tax. I budgeted a little bit less than what came in last year. Not much here. Again, this one's hard to gauge. You know, a lot of it can be weather. You get a really, really hot summer, this revenue tends to be a little bit higher than when we have a mild summer. Utility tax. Here we are. You can see the big jump from the 325,500 to 931,633. And just remember, Azivar will receive 18% of that new revenue for 36 months. So once the 36 months is up, it's all ours, but up until then, they get 18%.
So Becky, is that number reflect that 18% already coming out of it?
No, that's all of it. Okay. And then the telephone. Here again, like we talked about before, this is, again, people switching to cell phones from the landlines and voice-over IP or data plans don't count. So this number continues to go down. And that is it on the revenue side. All right, so I'm just gonna fly in through here. Your next packet will be the general fund expenditures fiscal year 22. So this should be 63 pages. All right. Your first couple pages is just the summary. Page four is where we start in on the expenses. I'm gonna try and make this a little bigger. Maybe not that big. Okay. Your first one is your salaries for elected officials. Nothing changes here. Everything's by ordinance.
Becky?
Yep.
Just out of curiosity sake, how much of the pie is salaries for all of the city employees, police and fire? Is it like 80%?
That's about that, yes. On average, it's about 80%. Some departments are higher. Some departments are closer to 90, 95 with salaries. It just depends. But overall, the overall budget is about 80%. Yes?
For salaries of regular full-time, what does this mean over here? Paid by water sewer, finance manager at 25% and the city attorney 25%?
So you're on the next sheet. So Water Sewer Fund reimburses the general fund for 25% of the finance director's salary and the city attorney's salary. So we're able to recoup some of that cost because the finance director and the city attorney do quite a bit of work for the water and sewer as well. So, so they reimburse the general fund, part of those salaries. I make sure I budget or I bill them as frequent as I can. So as long as we're on this page now, obviously, this is a draft. This was just for budget purposes, but it does assume or include the 3% for fiscal year 22. Obviously, that can change. The other thing I did include in here as a new initiative was an MPA intern. This would be a part-time, all-year-round intern that would come from the MPA program, probably from NIU. This is a master's in public administration. That's what my master's degree is in. So these are people that are specifically in school to do government administration and government work. They're, if they're full-time students, they are required to have an internship for at least one. Most of them wanna do it for the full two years. So if we're lucky, we would find somebody who we could have for a pretty small price for two years to help us until they finish their program. So, you know, it would be a, a way for us to get the much-needed help that we need without having to fund a full employee with benefits and the pension and everything. So this is something I think that's needed. I think there's, we are spread very thin. The words our auditors use are scary small when it comes to the size of our staff in comparison to other municipalities our size.
Are there any grants available to pay for interns at all? Did you know of?
For this program, I'm not sure. I'll have to look and see. I'm not, I'm not sure. I can check on that and see. I know at one point in time, there may have been an offset to some of the cost, but I'm not su, I haven't seen anything recently. I did include something in your packet. It was just a one-page document that the Illinois, let me see, that the ICMA puts out that just explains how important, I got it somewhere, if hiring an administrative intern is right for you. But it basically just highlights the process and the benefits that they could provide. So this would be a, a solution to help us, you know, the summer interns are great and they are very helpful, but, you know, you train them, they help you do something and then they're gone. So whereas this is somebody that you can train to, to do things, this is what they wanna do for a living, they're very eager to learn, they'll help in all different departments, not just, not just for me, you know, they'd be able to help everybody wherever they're needed. So this is something that I really think would be a benefit to us to at least try.
Would it be part-time since they're a student?
It would be. So it would be, on average, it would be 20 hours a week, but, but all year round. Because, yeah, because these are your full-time students. Most, most of them, the MPA students that don't need the internship are already working in a municipality or another local government, so they don't have to get the internship. I never needed the internship because I was already working at the county. So. So it doesn't have to be a decision today, just something, something to think about. And if you have any questions about it, feel free to reach out. I will inquire about your question, Tom, too, about see if there's any funding available for that. about see if there's any funding available for that. All right. I will move on if there aren't any other questions there. Health insurance. This shows a decrease again as well. And I did provide a one-page document in your packet as well, which I can pull up. This might be a good time. I'll just pull it up here quick. Sorry for those of you at home. I just wanted you to see the difference in what the city is saving, charging the employees the fourteen percent of the premium versus the twelve percent, as you can see up here. If they were still paying the twelve percent, these are the rates that they would be paying, and these are the rates that they're paying since they're paying the fourteen percent. So, here you can see the additional cost to each employee as well annually. And then the savings to the city is right here. It's just under forty thousand for the current, for the current year. So, I just wanted you to be able to see that. I can go back to our other document here. Okay. Page seven of sixty-three is just dental. That stays the same. Group life insurance, that stays pretty much the same. Not much changes there. Health insurance reimbursement, this is what we get reimbursed from the library and from your retirees. Unemployment's a zero. We don't budget for that. Meetings and conferences. I did lower this just a little bit. Just still because of COVID, I don't think things are going to be fully in-person everywhere. I still think a lot of things are going to change this next year. Even conferences that would normally be in-person, I think are gonna become fully remote or partially remote. So, I anticipate seeing some kind of savings there. Subscriptions and publications. Daniel, this is where you're talking about? This is just all of our annual reports and our legal publications. Next, we have our repair and maintenance of buildings. This is our janitorial. Our rug service. I do have a cost in here, which I'm not sure is accurate and might change regarding the exterior painting of city hall. We did have some quotes going around as to, I think maybe our public works director was looking into that as well, as to, if you'll notice the paint, I don't know if you see it peeling. We've gotten some quotes, and Brent could probably fill you in on that.
Yeah, unfortunately, it looks like it's probably going to be more than the ten thousand, but we're still working on gathering information for what those options are to us and what those costs will be. But hopefully, in the next public works meeting or the following public works meeting, I should have the information pulled together for that.
All right. Next page. Our repair and maintenance of equipment. This is our copy machine, printer maintenance, any AED maintenance. No increase there. Legal. You'll notice the increase in legal. We're on page fifteen of sixty-three. We are getting ready to enter negotiations on all the contracts. So, the city attorney always requests a little bit of a bump just in case he needs outside legal for help with anything, so. Generally, don't have to use it. You'll see all kinds of zeros over here, but it's, it's a just-in-case. Next, other professional services. This is a question to counsel because I'm not really sure what you want to do about the mosquito management. Last year, you had budgeted for Four applications? Four applications, but we only used one. And same with the summer before. So, I just left the one for now because that's what we've used, but you can decide what you want to do with that. If you want to still budget for it, if you want to stay with the one, if you want to budget for more, that is up to you. The other large cost is what we, what we pay to OZVAR. So, for all the revenues that they found for us, which includes the, the gas tax. Okay, next. So, our utilities and our telephone. You'll see that's decreased quite a bit from last year because last year, we had budgeted for the new, the one-time phone system cost to go on with the county, and we no longer have that. We're actually going to start saving a little money each month. Our monthly costs are less than, than they were before, so. Next page, codification. These are our annual update to our municipal code. Other communication, these are our cell phones and tablets. Office supplies. Our biggest increase here is our tech support with Boone County IT. If you'll notice down towards the bottom, we have a forty-eight thousand dollar figure there because we are paying half of a salary and benefits of one of the IT people. So, that's where you'll, you see that larger expense. I'll keep moving on if anybody, unless anybody has a question. Gas and oil, here's the expenditure for purchasing the gas. Other supplies. Here again, we have the supplies for probation. I didn't completely eliminate it just in case they figure out an agreement by summertime or halfway through the year or something. We at least have something in there for that. And then cleaning supplies. Miscellaneous.
I guess I got, I do have a question in that one.
Sure.
So, did we see a big increase or decrease in debris and garbage that they're not, since they weren't cleaning up on Sundays or whatever it was?
Do you notice anything, Brett?
I guess nothing that sticks out. There's a couple areas that are traditionally, will catch it, and those are things that we've done in-house to take care of that we wouldn't have to before. But by and large, not a big difference.
So, is it a worthy program in general at that point? Or was there a decrease in debris because of the lack of traffic downtown?
I think, I think you're seeing, that's, I'm sure, part of it. There will be more people staying home, not people, and it's paying people out. But I would definitely say that any extra help that we can get for any of those kind of activities, there's always a plus for us because we always have plenty of things to do.
All right. Miscellaneous expenses. This is your hometown Christmas, your heritage days. Death certificates, the fair. RMTD, yes.
What is the other for eight thousand dollars? Is that just like a catch-all for cases, anything else, or?
Down at the bottom, you'll see it's funeral flowers, business cards, notary appraisals. Anytime we have to do an appraisal, it'll come out of this line item, and those can run a couple thousand dollars. Miscellaneous supplies, yeah, it's kind of a catch-all. And sometimes, it's hardly spent at all, and other times, you know, we spend more of it. It just depends.
Some of these may not happen. We've already heard that they're not doing this year.
Right.
At that expense. So, we're hoping that things change. It'll look like our age days by year, see what the COVID variety is.
Okay, moving on. This is transfer out. So, this would be your transfer from general fund to capital fund for projects and capital line item. This would include your, this says payment five of seven for the fire truck. It's six of seven. I did not change that. So, that's your fire truck payment. If you are to approve the capital expenditures, like the vehicles and equipment, that's another three hundred and ninety thousand, six thirty-one. You've transferred to our public benefit capital, which is road and storm sewer, stormwater projects. That's a hundred and seventy. And then your one point five million for the Appleton road widening. That's the city portion. And then our debt certificate for city hall, which is sixty-four, one thirty-four. So, your total is two million, one ninety-three, five ninety-three. And we'll get into capital. I have another spreadsheet for capital. This just shows you how the money moves from general fund to capital.
That one point five we're after, we'll have to feed our share.
That's correct. If the project moves forward, if we are fortunate enough to be awarded the grant, then that represents the city's portion.
Number five to six million dollars.
Correct. That represents twenty percent of the cost. It's an eighty-twenty match.
And what exactly is that widening? What portion?
It'll go from north, just north, well, basically, the bridge, the twin bridges on Appleton to the north to the US Route Twenty intersection on the south.
As we're greatly helped with congestion, we have at quick times, plants.
All right. Next page, twenty-five. That just shows our anticipated levy for the audit, which is the same as it has been. And our audit and accounting expenditures. We do have a couple new Gatsby reports that we're required to do. Plus, we will be required to do what's called a single audit because although we love the Kira's grant, that's federal dollars, and it puts us over the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar threshold. So, we'll be required to do a single audit, which is just another form of a check and balance with those federal funds. And that, I'm not quite sure on the cost yet, but that's going to cost us a couple thousand dollars, so.
Can, can I ask a question real quick? I, I want to go back to the Appleton road widening. So, um, the, the community development block grant, which is covering the eighty percent, Brent, that could be used for anything from acquisition of property, demolition, infrastructure, public facility improvement. So, um, did we specifically ask for this money for the Appleton road widening? Or did we just apply for this grant and we can use it for something else?
We have a list of projects on our long-range transportation plan that we maintain through R-1. And the STPG funds, basically for road projects, apply to your major arterials, the higher, more dense traffic generators, of which Appleton is a qualifier. That happens to be our highest-rated project as far as for STPG funding on our long-term plan, and that's why that one was submitted in this go-around.
Okay, because I was wondering if we could, you know, maybe, I don't know how often they give these out or if we could maybe utilize it for something like the lease building in the future or something, something like that?
Typically, they have to be transportation-related. Back before R-1 was formed, we used to get an allotment based on our population, kind of like our MFT allotments are determined. We used to get an allotment of these funds that we could spend locally on our, on transportation projects. And then when we became part of R-1, then that funding level was, was sent to R-1 instead of us directly. So, now we are just applying. And they get a, R-1 every year, STPG funds. Usually, it's around three million. However, this year, they had some, some additional reserves. So, the total pot, I believe, is closer to nine million dollars being offered up in this go-around. But typically, every year, they put out a notice, and there's usually about three million dollars' worth of STPG funds available to local agencies.
Okay, and then I missed where you said, where was it going to start at? And go to the twenty interchange?
Okay, so it's going to be it will be to finish to, to make Appleton four lanes all the way through town. So, it'll start basically at the bridge, at the, at the South Bridge on Appleton, which is north of the Locust Street intersection. And that will end at the US Route Twenty intersection to the south. It's already a four-lane section. It was contemplated to be done back in two thousand and five when we had the last infrastructure improvements for then Chrysler Expansion, FCA Chrysler Expansion. So, at that time, back in two thousand and five, we purchased the right-of-way that was needed to allow for the widening to be done. So, all of that work has already been done. The plans, in fact, were IDS and everything were done. Now, they have to be updated because, like I said, from being two thousand and five, they're too old. So, that's part of the process that we have to go through if this STPG fund grants, if we're awarded the grant.
Okay, and I'm assuming that it's going to widen out on the railroad track side, being how there's residential houses on the other side?
The right-of-way in that area is, is already sufficient enough to accommodate the four lanes. So, if you look on the residential side, you'll notice, and that's kind of where we put the tree, we, when we did the tree beautification grant this past summer along that side. So, there's additional where the open ditch and stuff is now on the east side of Appleton. When the widening's done, it'll be a curb and gutter section, and the pavement will be, will be widened accordingly. So, there's, the existing right-of-way there is enough, sufficient. The big change for right-of-way would be north of the intersection of Locust, where part of the mobile home park, we had to purchase, and the, there was a row of mobile homes there that have been relocated.
Okay, thanks, Brent.
And out of curiosity, when they were thinking about this widening in that, in that area with the railroad tracks, is there enough room to allow for a biaduct so that traffic can keep flowing instead of having to stop for the train?
No, your elevations would not allow for that.
All right. We will keep going. So, we are past audits. We are at IMRF. Levy stays the same.
Yeah, can you explain this to me exactly what this is for? I noticed we paid two thousand dollars dues, and what is this exactly?
Which one?
Well, taxes to IRMF.
Okay, so this is the, this is the amount that we levy. So, out of our property taxes, we're allocating at least sixty-five thousand of it to, to pay IMRF. That's our retirement fund. That's Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund. So, so if you look at the following page, let's see. Let's see, it's not there. It's a little bit farther in. So, each year, IMRF informs us what percentage that the city is responsible for paying into the employee's pension plan. So, this year, it's ten point seven zero percent. So, ten point seven zero percent of everybody who's in IMRF, the city is responsible for paying that portion as well. So, every month, we submit money to IMRF on behalf of, you have the city, you have the employee that pays four and a half percent. And then, there, there's always four and a half percent. And then you have the employer portion, and that changes every year based on the market, based on how IMRF is doing to keep it funded at such a high level that it is right now. So, this year, it's ten point seven. Last year, it was eleven point three two. So, it just, it fluctuates a little bit.
IMRF is currently funded at just over 93%. It's the highest funded pension in Illinois and it's the model that a lot of people wish the rest of the state could figure out.
Yep. Uh, replacement taxes. We had talked about how some of that money is moved in to pay for some of the pensions. So, this is the portion for IMRF. Interest income, this is not used anymore. Expense reimbursement for IMRF, this is community development reimbursing for their portion. Here's the premium expense. So, here's where you have your, on page 31. Here's where you have your employees, the salaries. We budget for eight months at the current rate, which we know, which is 10.7%. Bless you. We don't know what the rate's gonna be come January 1st, 2022 yet, so we estimate. I always estimate that it's gonna be higher, so that we're sure to, to have enough to, to cover that expenditure in here. So, that's our IMRF. Move on here, we have our FICA and Medicare. 200,000 is what's levied.
Becky, can you back up for a second?
Sure.
This might be an appropriate time to explain a little bit more about IMRF. Employees have the option of contributing to their IMRF to, to, up to 10 years under your salary. An employee becomes vested in IMRF at 10 years of service. If the employee doesn't make 10 years of service, then IMRF does not combine their contributions and the employee's contributions into a pension. However, that money does not go back to the city, it stays in the pot. Some comments were made, a rumor was that you'd be on the hook for the mayor's pension after he retired forever. That's not true. The money that got paid into IMRF and the money that the employee paid into IMRF, combined at 10 years, to, they do a formula to determine what a pension might be. If the, the mayor is gone and the new mayor comes, they start putting money into the new mayor's IMRF pension. They're not on the hook. The minute the mayor leaves, they're not on the hook for that mayor for any payments after that period. So, they're vested or not. The money stays in the, in the city's IMRF fund, and that's how they kinda figure what, and they don't get the money back that's been paid into IMRF, 'cause that's how, how IMRF balances their book, is the city's contribution. So, in other words, if I were to serve another term, I would make 10 years. And when I was done being mayor and I left, the money that the city paid in and the money that I paid in is gonna be used to formulate what my pension amount would be. And then, the mayor leaves office, there is never another contribution by the city or the taxpayers into a pension for the mayor. And that's a misunderstanding, it's not like fire and police, where we continue to make contributions, because their pension is, is arranged different. And I wanna make that clear, so anything with any employee that comes here. It used to be eight years, an employee would be invested for their pension, and then it went to 10 years, what was that amount?
Uh, it's 20,011, 2011.
So, yes.
Because I don't profess to understand it. So, so for the roughly eight years that you've been in office, have there been payments by the city toward IMF for that position?
Yes.
Okay, so regardless of whether it's you or somebody else, there's still, there's still payments, just not for you specifically.
Correct. Right, as long as that position is more than a part-time position, he has no choice. The mayor has no choice. The minute it becomes more than 1,000 hours a year, there is no choice whether to contribute or not contribute.
So, you know, there was speculation that the citizens become responsible for the mayor's pension after he leaves office. It's actually, after they become responsible, citizens become responsible for the new mayor's contribution, contribution to the section. Is that what you're calling it? It was perplexed.
Alright, so, I'm just curious, is this IMF, um, is that instituted by the IML? Is that where this comes from, or is that totally?
IMF or two completely, we've got no information. Okay, so it's an Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund. It's IMRF, they're a freestanding retirement fund. It's made available to municipalities and some other governmental, they have to apply, to be approved to join their pension program. R1 did that, and they were accepted. And it works basically the same way, where it's accepted as an IMRF entity. If you work more than 1,000 hours, you don't have a choice. You have to contribute. The entity contributes, the employee also contributes. Employee then also has the option to contribute more than what the normal contribution is. It actually can be up to 10% of your salary.
And since they pay 7.25% interest on your contributions, it's a very good way to save money for retirement, for all employees. Sorry, I didn't know my mic went off. Yes, sir?
So, the money, besides what you put in yourself, the other money does actually come from the taxpayers, though, right? The other part of the IMF money, retirement fund?
Yes, the, the city's required to put that money in to the retirement fund. Yes, all of them and no?
I guess just for clarity, before Fred Brereton took office, he originally took over the mayorship with a part-time gig and would not have been contributing. And it wasn't until it became a full-time position, thereby eliminating the city administrator, which we would have been on the hook for, the city administrators, IMRF. So, it's just a, it's a personnel shift of who's gonna get tagged as having an IMRF contribution made toward that position.
Correct, yeah, I'd have to go back and look and see what it was before the previous mayor, if he was contributing at all or not. But, but yes, you're correct. And it's over, but you know, it's a percentage over basically your total payroll. You know, it's, it's your contribution.
You have to work at least 1,000 hours a year, verifiable, you have to sign a document. City has to sign a document that that's the case. Okay.
Alright.
I, I have a question on that.
Go ahead, Marcia.
If I missed it, if you already explained it, Mayor Chamberlain. Um, but, so if an employee doesn't make it to 10 years, but he's been paying in for the last eight, or nine, or seven, whatever it may be, then, um, what happens to that money, because he's not gonna collect it? Is, does that just roll into that fund?
No, the city's portion, yes, rolls into the city's fund. The employees' personal contributions that they've made from day one, each paycheck, then go back to the employee, 'cause it's their money.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Good.
Alright, moving on. Let's see, we're at FICA. Same thing, it's a certain percentage. Water, sewer, community development, reimburse general fund. Library also reimburses us. There's our, our FICA expenses. Medicare, same thing. There's our liability insurance, levy, same thing as we have been, 300,000. Our insurance premium, so the general fund pays 65%. Water, sewer pays the remaining portion of our liability insurance. We've had some really good rates the last couple of years, if you recall. They have not increased our rates, so we're pretty happy with that. Public safety building. So, these are your salaries for your dispatch and your records clerk. And also, a portion of, of one of the IT people fall under this as well, because they service 911 and all the staff up there. So, we have salaries, including overtime. If you recall, the, the county is on a different fiscal year than we are, so we have to manipulate the numbers a little bit, 'cause their numbers are based off of their fiscal year, which is December 1 through November 30th. And ours is May 1 to April 30th, so we have to tweak those a little bit, but.
Question. So, you had mentioned IT person? Um, so, but there was a separate item where we were getting ding for IT. So, this is just a generic 50-50 kind of split?
This is our IT supporting everything at the PSB, not including what, the, the, the new agreement that includes city hall, the fire department. This person is existing staff up at the PSB, plus the records, dispatch, you know, all that. So, we were already paying that. Okay. Next line item, here again, we have to, we pay 50% of their salaries. So, we also pay 50% of their FICA and IMRF as well. And then we have our other contractual services. This is where their health insurance, portions of their liability insurance, all their monthly expenses. We go 50-50 on, on their bills. Every month, they send us a large stack, all the bills, 50%. And then, some new equipment that I was told, they were gonna be looking at a new server, some upgrade, upgrades to some records management systems for this year. And then there always seems to be something, something else, whether it's a, an AC unit, a boiler. It seems like there's always something, so we try and anticipate those expenses as well here. Question?
Yeah, not that I'm complaining here, but why don't we pay 50% of their jail expenses?
That is specifically a, a county function. The sheriff oversees, oversees that. Yep, this was an agreement as far as 911, and 911, I can't remember how many years ago it's been. I mean, it's been a long time.
It predates 2000.
And it predates me, yeah. I don't know if Shane knows.
As far as the jail?
No, no, 911.
The agreement with 911, forever. But, um, this was just a way to split costs. But yeah, you're, I, yeah, the sheriff oversees corrections, so that falls just on them. So, that's a good thing, we don't have to pay for half of that. Okay. Alright, next is Police and Fire Commission. This is your physical, your psych exams, your testing. All that, and that fluctuates just based on officers retire and being placed, or promotions. It just, it just fluctuates every year. Alright, our civil defense, that would be our tornado sirens. We levy $7,000 a year, that's the way it has been for quite a while. Keep going, our expenses here. Our siren maintenance with Braniff Communications is about 5,500 a year. And we budget a little extra in case there's repairs needed. So, I'll keep going. Landfill, we'll let Brent take this one. We are levying the same amount as the last few years, 50,000. And we base that off of, well, we kept the levy the same, but expenses will be the same as well. The 50,000, based on, that's what the, the county also budgeted. If you remember, we, they hold the, the landfill fund, and then we pay them into that fund, and then they pay all the bills. But we each put in the same amount of money. So, if we put in 50, they put in 50. So, Brent, did you have anything to say on the landfill?
Nope.
Alright, next, move on to forestry. Levy is still 40,000. The good news here is that the majority of the Emerald Ash trees have been removed. If you can see, going back up to 2016, we were spending $135,000 in, in tree removals. And each year, we've been able to, to decrease that amount, so we'll be back to the 40,000 for that. Keep going. Council on Aging. This is a portion of, of what we pay for the transportation program. We pay a total of 41,023 comes out of this line item, and 18,000 comes out of our economic development line item. Demolition nuisance, we have 5,000 in here for the mowings and any type of maintenance that wouldn't have, need to be happened at abandoned properties. Hopefully, we're gonna have a new grant that will help us take care of this, so that we don't have to use any city funds. Planning Department Services, you have your planning commission and your regional planning commission. Those are the only things left in this line item.
Back to the other one where you had the, um, maintenance of properties and that.
Uh huh.
So, what, what is the latest scoop on the house on West Madison Street? As far as unloading that, or what was the latest? 'Cause I thought we were gonna offer it to the neighbors, and did that go anywhere yet, or what's the latest scoop?
Uh, we're still working on notification of those adjoining properties.
While we pause, can, can I ask a quick question about the public safety building?
Go ahead, please.
Um, so, this is how we share that building with the county. I'm just wondering, um, like, do we also split, like, the comm ed bill? And, um, do we have water and sewer expenses? Or do we just do that pro bono for them?
Um, I'd have to check if I remember seeing a water, I don't remember seeing a water sewer bill in there. Like I said, I, I get a copy of their month's every bill, I do not remember seeing that. Some of the other utilities, yes, we do. As well as, you know, office supplies, any type of professional services, that type of thing. But, um, I don't remember seeing a water bill, I guess I'd have to look. I don't know if we send one there. We'll check.
Okay.
We'll check on that. Mm-hmm. Okay, let's see, where are we at? Here's our economic business development, here's your allotment to growth dimensions, here's the rest of your council on aging, transportation funding, and then your downtown facade program. Remember, at 5% of the video gaming, which comes out to the 19,209, or 290. Keep moving on, our tourism, this is our mural maintenance. This is, um, the Art Council, uh, matches funds up to 5,000 for maintenance of the downtown murals. Keep going. Historic preservation. These are printing the brochures, the awards banquet, any of the events. We'll see if they happen this year, we budgeted for them. We're not, we were not able to have the awards banquet last year due to COVID. Or really, we had one little fundraiser, but other than that, we weren't able to do anything, so hopefully this year. Buchanan Street Strolls. Last year, well, we had budgeted and had, on the calendar for nine. We did not have all nine, I think we ended up with five. The budget this time was possibly for six. Here again, it kinda depends on COVID. We were gonna try and meet with some business owners in the next month or so and start to go over that. Um, the idea was maybe once a month, instead of every other weekend, starting in May. So, we'll kinda play that by ear, and hopefully, we're able to have some. And hopefully, we're able to have some, have some strolls. Yes.
Looking back at one of the other pages on that, it looks like that pretty much operates at a loss every time. Is that true?
It's so new, it's hard to tell. This last year, definitely because of COVID. Normally, we do the cup sales, which is a pretty good revenue maker for us. Plus, the businesses pay for the cups. And we did not do the cups this year because of COVID. Because the bar, you know, we didn't want people handing cups back and forth and sharing germs. So normally, that would be a revenue maker, and we did not do that. So, and then just approach, a lot of businesses this year, some were able to donate. You know, some we just weren't comfortable approaching as, you know, going through COVID. So this was kind of an anomaly year and hard to determine what could be, what kind of revenue could be brought in. So I guess this year, we'll kind of hopefully determine going forward how that's going to work.
Yes, Solomon, no.
And again, not being real involved in it, but I'm gathering that it's, it's a, intentively supposed to be a break even and stimulate activity downtown. So it may be a loss to some extent. But in the overall scheme of things, it's to help promote the downtown area and generate more foot traffic slash business for everybody downtown.
Exactly, that's the plan, yes. What we're main, what we may be losing in, in costs, we're hoping we're making up on the sales tax side. Okay, let's see, that might be it for expenses. Yeah, those next few pages are just strolls, which obviously, we don't have that much data yet. So, so that'll do it for expenditures. I'm doing pretty good compared to, compared to Brent's, huh? Okay.
On page 52, Council on Aging. Did we used to have buses that said Council on Aging? And now they just say Transportation? So we don't have the Rockford Mass transit at all? That we used to pay $10,000 for or something?
Um, I don't think, I don't think, I don't know if they've ever said RMTD on them. They say.
No, not theirs, but we used, we used to have a bus traffic that would pick up.
Oh, we still have the bus.
We do? And do we still pay them?
We do. Yep, that is in here. The last couple of years, they've told us that it was going to go up from $25,000 to $30,000. But then they continue to only invoice us for the 25. They've been able to secure funding for the other five and have never, have never billed us for more than the 25.
They're never really sure what the federal allotment's going to be. Because they keep changing the name of the program and how it gets funded. So, you know, every year, people would bid for vehicles, all the nonprofits in the region and so forth. But nobody's been, really been bid for vehicles. So they haven't billed us so much. They told us it was going up to 37, I think, last year. And they only billed us for the normal amount.
Yeah, they've only billed us the 25, so.
Because they cut the number of trips to, it used to be one an hour, now it's four, it's four a day. Now.
I still see it after work. I see it around 5 o'clock downtown.
The publication, can we increase that? Or is that not the right time to increase expenditures?
We can. What do you, what do you want to increase it to? Or what do you want to propose? I guess we'd have to get some numbers, this from, probably from, are you thinking like the, like the Journal or the Shopper? Or something like that, the Shopper?
The Shopper, which reaches more people. I just want people to be aware, to take care of the elderly, to shovel. Some, the one that called me, he said he was like 84. He said, he can do it the first time, but when the street department goes plows again, it's hard for him to go back out again and take the snow out. And I just want younger people to appreciate the elderly people living in their neighborhood. Watch out for them. And hopefully, also clean the fire hydrants as well. Just an announcement for people to remember. We're going to get to that age one day. And hopefully, somebody, our neighbors will take care of us as well.
Well, two things. We can probably negotiate a rate with the Shopper for those kinds of public service announcements. Because sometimes he does those for free. And the BDR, although it only has one paper a week, they'll put that kind of stuff in there for free. So if it's a seasonal kind of thing, you know, please help the elderly, you know, shovel your sidewalk in front of your house, those kinds of things. I think they've always been very receptive to trying to work with us to push out information.
I'll talk to the Shopper, though. I'll send him an email and see what he says.
All right, thank you.
Thanks. All right, next. Where's my list? We are going to go on to the non-union wages. I don't know how much you want to talk about it tonight. I'm sure you've had a chance to look at it. You kind of saw it when we went through the budget. These are the, the proposed non-union that would be 3%, which is consistent with the raises that all of your unions will receive on May 1. And just for a little back information, if you don't remember, part of the reason it was negotiated at the 3% was because their health insurance premium was going from the 12% to the 14%. So realizing that they were going to be, going to be taking home less money out of their check because they were going to be paying more for the health insurance, that was the reason behind the 3% for this year. So just, just something to think about. And your non-union are also paying that 14% as well, so.
Becky?
Yes.
So these people that are non-union, do they receive a pension?
Most of them, yes. You have a couple part-time that do not receive a pension in their current position. Maybe there's only one.
Okay, so say, somebody retires, and then somebody comes in. Do they automatically start where the last person's left off with their wages?
No, not necessarily. I mean, it would be up to the department head ultimately, but not necessarily. You generally would bring somebody in at a lower rate than what somebody retired at. It just depends on the position.
Historically, that's been hit or miss. A lot of times, it is at a lower rate. But quite frankly, in a lot of cases, we're playing below market rate already. So if you want to track talent from outside the city, if they have to hire from outside, we pay the same or maybe even a little bit more. It all depends on whether we can get applicants.
Well, my reasoning for saying that is if we do 3% every year for all these people, then in 10 years, it's like 3%, 3%, 3%. And it gets quite high.
We haven't done a 3% raise since before 2008.
Before the recession, yeah. It's been a long time since, since there's been a 3%. And that's why I, that's why.
I remember it.
There hasn't been a 3%.
No, hadn't had a 3% raise for a long time.
They've been 2, 2 and 1/2. And that's why I wanted to stress why you all, why you saw the 3 this year. And it was because of those, the health insurance premium increasing.
Prior, prior to the recession, the previous city councils had adopted a, a method of raises that they applied to the non-union workers that resulted in very large raises back around 2000 through 2005 timeframe. You averaged 3 and 1/2 to 4% raises back in that timeframe. When the recession hit, that all stopped. And we haven't seen anything more than a 2 and 1/2% raise, I don't think, since that timeframe.
So the city labor pool, we have five unions that we negotiate with. And before, we would have two-year contract with this one and three-year contract with that one. And so you're constantly in negotiation. And we would pay a high dollar for outside labor attorneys from Chicago area usually. We ended up one time with a federal intervention person. And so what I tried to do, and we've been successful in doing for the past eight years, is we ask all of the unions to do four-year contracts. And all of them have the same raises each year. And then whatever raises they get, we also pay that kind of a raise to the non-union people. And there's some thinking behind that. If you want your non-union people to stay non-union, you pay them right. And, you know, we have a prevailing wage ordinance that, that we pass every year. I think it's important for people to understand that the salaries of a lot of the administrative people, secretaries, et cetera, in the city are well below what would get paid anyplace outside of Elvedere. For department head salaries, you can go online and look at what the average salaries are for each of the positions here. They're tens of thousands of dollars lower than they would be someplace else. And so when people start talking about cutting the budget some more, if you don't take care of the people that work in your city, and we are blessed because we have an extremely bright and professional group that run our departments here, you're going to end up losing your really good people. The people that work here and stay here are realistically here because they love Elvedere and they want to serve the people. And we're extremely fortunate. So I would ask you, so that you understand, to do that comparison of what the salaries for department heads, other places are with the salaries that we pay. Because we're not competitive. We're fortunate that we've kept the people that we have.
Any other questions here right now? Otherwise, we'll move on to capital. All right. So you'll have one sheet that says capital schedule, fiscal year '22. This is the one that just kind of highlights all the requests from the different, from the different departments. And what we've so far put in the budget. So when we saw that, the amount that was transferred from general fund to capital, it was this number down here, that $2,129,459. That was assuming that all of this would take place. So obviously, if, if something's removed or taken out, the amount that you transfer from general to capital would be smaller. But this is where it stands right now. This includes the Logan Avenue improvements. But you'll see that I put on the side that this is paid with Rebuild Illinois Funds and MFT, not general fund. So that is not included in your, in your total down here that's highlighted. So, any questions for department heads on any of these capital items?
Not, not necessarily for that. But maybe the deputy chief, Eric, can help us with the.
It was on that same stack.
Mini pumper, what's the latest scoop on the mini pumper? As far as it being built out and.
It's getting pretty close. It's, the production's almost done. It's getting the ultra-high pressure pump put in, which is one of the last steps before delivery. So we expect that in a couple of months.
Excellent, thanks.
And you'll notice here on the spreadsheet that we also put fiscal year '23, '24, and '25, just to give you an idea of expenditures that could be coming or requested. Question?
Yeah, I think we did talk about this at one time, but I forgot what this was. What, for community development, what was the plotter?
The plotter is the, it's a large formatted printer. It prints like blueprints and larger GIS maps. These, yeah. Yep. The one we have, we bought used as it was. And it's, it's hobbled along, but I think they're starting to have some issues with it. Okay, so if there's no questions right there, I still, then we'll move on to the capital budget. This just breaks it down, line item by line item. We don't necessarily have to go through it, line item by line item, if you don't want to. But this shows how we have the capital fund broken out into, into two sections. We have our public benefits, which is where your, your projects, your Appleton, your, your Don Gate detention, you know, all your infrastructure projects take place. That uses the 110 number. And then you'll notice down here, we have our capital assets. This is the 752 number. And this is where your, your vehicles and your equipment, any improvements to buildings, things like that, that takes place down here in this section. So it's all under the capital fund. We just break it down into two sections.
I have a question on, on the capital project.
Please, go ahead, Marcia.
So under the public benefit, the Don Gate detention, actual fiscal year '20 was $9,175. But then if you go to page 8 of '20, it's $9,175. But on page 4 of '20, it's the Bellwood slash Don Gate detention pond. And it's $1,212,000. So I'm confused as to how we went from $9,000 to over 1.2 million?
So we, we budgeted the 1.1. It was $600,000 for Don Gate and $500 for the low-flow channel construction. So those are two separate projects. The money's already been moved into the capital fund. But the expenditures are actually taking place as we speak, if I'm correct, Brent. So there's a lot more. You've probably been seeing the expenditures come through on your bills. But most of that money should be spent this fiscal year, or at least some of it.
Yeah, for both those projects, Sixth Street, the low-flow channel's going to take longer, unfortunately. We're going through the bureaucratic process and working with a core of engineers to try to get through their issues that we need to resolve in order to make that project go forward. So we're still going through those steps. The Bellwood and the high school detention areas all should be finished up this spring. So those expenses will be finished. Again, they're not showing up in the current budget because they've already been budgeted. Already been, funds have already been transferred to accommodate those costs.
I know, it gets confusing when we transfer the money, but yet, the project isn't finished yet. I know it looks, it's, it's hard to know what to put in there because the money's already been transferred, but the project's not done. So I don't want to show the expenses yet.
Okay, so that also includes some of the Sixth Street? Because I didn't see anything else in capital other than the implementation of the stormwater utility tax for $100,000 that has anything to do with our south side flooding issue?
Could you restate the question, Marcia, please?
Yeah, I, I don't see anything else in our capital schedule other than $100,000 for the implementation of our stormwater utility tax that addresses anything to do with south side flooding?
Actually, if you go to the capital schedule, the overview page that we were looking at, if you look at FY '23, where it talks about Harrison, question mark, Fifth Avenue, question mark. The Fifth Avenue, question mark, would be the, the stormwater project to bypass. As council has already approved, doing preliminary engineering on that project. Based on my recommendation, that that'd be the next capital improvement project to do. That was before we were notified of the funding opportunities for Appleton Road. So anyway, the pre-engine, the, the preliminary engineering for that project continues. So the question mark there is because council will ultimately have to decide when, when that project is going to go. The estimated price tag, preliminary price tag on that, at least for budget numbers, I think is like $4.5 million, if I'm remembering correctly. So that is a significant cost for that project. And includes some road reconstruction along with the storm sewer work. So that would be, that would be the next project as far as on the south side stormwater improvements.
And if you'll notice on the first page there, we did create a line item for that project. If you look right underneath low-flow channel, you'll see Fifth Avenue Stormwater Bypass. So we did create that line item anticipating that there will be some engineering costs this year. We just don't know what that will be yet. So it, there is a line item for it.
Okay, I saw that. I just saw that there was a zero there. And I'm just like, okay, so we have, we, have we stopped thinking about our south side flooding issue? That fresh.
Is there anything else on the capital? I wasn't going to go line item through line item here. I think the only other expense, we had budgeted for the ADA sidewalks. That is, let's see. Yeah, it was under page, page five of '20, shows $150,000 for public improvements, which includes the pavement striping and the ADA sidewalk compliance on the overlays. This is something that Public Works schedules every year.
It's a requirement that we have, if we're using motor fuel tax funds to do our overlay work, which is what we do, then we are required, as part of utilizing those funds, to make sure that there's ADA-compliant sidewalk returns on the intersections where there are sidewalk returns. So, that's a plug number that we use, and fortunately, that expense goes up when we get to do more, when we're doing more overlays, so.
Yes, Tom, what is it?
I did have one other question here. It says, impact fee revision, what is REV? Is that...
That's revenue. So, so the impact fee revenue, the city's portion, used to stay in the impact fee fund, even though the city's, it was technically revenue that belonged to the city. This is the revenue that does not belong to the school district, the park district, or conservation. And they recommended, I think, two years ago, that we not leave that money in there, and that it's technically capital. So every year now, I have to move that money into the capital fund. So, and that amount fluctuates. It depends however many, however many new homes there are, and however much impact fee money there is.
So is this true that in fiscal year '18, we actually had $723,000 of impact fees that we collected?
That was impact fee money that had already been sitting in the impact fee fund that we had to move. So that's been years and years. That's 15 years of impact fees, 20 years of impact fees that had been sitting in the impact fee fund, in the escrow fund. So, at that time, we moved all of those to the capital fund.
Okay, what about '19 and '20 then? It shows $21,000 and $19,000?
And that would be correct. So, so yes, so that would've been the amount for all the new homes, that would've been the impact fee amount that directly came back to the city for that entire year.
And Beck, I'd like to clarify something. That impact fee is the police, fire, public works, and city administration impact fee?
Correct.
That applies not just to residential, but all commercial and industrial as well. So, any kind of development pays into that kind of fee. So that's not necessarily a good gauge of residential development. That includes commercial as well.
I can tell you, these are all residential, though.
Really?
Yes.
Surprised me.
It's all residential. Yep. All right, I think that is all I have. I don't think there was anything else. So unless anybody has any questions, I'm done for tonight. Thank you for bearing with me. There's cookies, I'm sorry for those of you at home. The rest of us have Girl Scout cookies here that we're gonna open.
Take one down and pass them around.
That's right. They're new, we got them today.
Thank you, Ms. Tobin. And under three public safety unfinished business, there will be none this evening, which brings us public safety new business. We'll first hear an update from the police department, and then the fire department. Police department, you're on deck.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So just to give you an update on what's happening with the police department. In your packets, you should've had a flyer regarding a upcoming CPA or Citizens Police Academy class, starting March 3rd and going through March 5th. That'll be every Wednesday night, starting at 6:00 PM, usually ending about 8:00 PM. And if any of the aldermen are interested, and we highly encourage you to get involved, it actually is very good information about your police department, please contact Officer Blankenship. Over this last weekend, Deputy Chief Wallace and Officer Blankenship coordinated the traffic control for vaccinations at the Keenage Center, along with Deputy Chief Gardner, who coordinated the traffic, along with the officers, on Sunday. It sounds like there'll be upcoming vaccinations in the next few weeks, that the scheduling and coordination of that is still being put together by the health department, and there is a possibility we'll be involved with that as well. The Belvidere Police Department's partnering with Empower Boone for their toiletries and personal care drive, that started February 22nd and will be going through March 5th. Drop-off locations will be the Boone County Public Safety Building, Belvidere Fire Department, City Hall, and Chamber of Commerce. If you have any questions regarding what is eligible to donate, or any other general questions, please go to the Belvidere Police Department Facebook page for that information. I have met with the COSAP grant partners, and obviously, we're all willing to attend an upcoming meeting to answer any questions that may still be out there. The only thing that I would need to know in preparation for that would be when it would be coming off the table. I'm not sure how we'd go about doing that. So, that's something that we look forward to attending, and hopefully providing you the information you need to make an informed decision. And then tomorrow night, the police department will be attending a fire and police commission meeting at 6:00 PM here at City Hall. We'll be going forward with entry-level testing, where we'll be interviewing the prospective candidate, reviewing a polygraph, and then ultimately, the fire and police commission will be determining whether or not to offer a conditional offer of employment. If this candidate is successful going forward, this will be a replacement for Sergeant Staples' position, since he retired back in early February, I believe it was, late January. Unless there are questions, I'll turn it back over to Mayor Chairman.
Questions for the chief? Alderman Frank, please proceed.
Okay, so do you already have your candidates that are set up to come for this meeting tomorrow night?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Or is it open for other people as well to come?
It's an open meeting, but the candidate themselves has been going through the process, and has been going through the process for probably some time now. And the interview and polygraph review is just the next phase of that process, but the meeting itself is open to the general public. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Next up, we have a fire department update. Captain Shadle will present the update. You have the floor, Captain.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome.
So, the fire department this past month, for us, has, other than being bitter cold, has been a pretty typical month. So, as far as incidents, Chief Heiser normally goes over a couple major incidents that happened in the past month. So, the past 30 days, we've run 306 calls. Six of those were fires. The most notable fire was on Carley. It was a garage fire that was extinguished by us right away, before there was much damage to the house at all, so that was good. There were three cooking fires, one of which that we extinguished. There were seven automobile accidents that we responded to, six gas leaks, one hazmat spill, and one carport that collapsed. So, we also ran 182 EMS calls, and 48 of those were advanced life support, where we started IVs or gave additional ALS care. So, going on with promotional testing, we're still in the process of that. We just had interviews, and Chief Lees to his chief points. The next is the assessment center, where they take a written test and do some practical exams, and so that's continuing. So the AFG grant has been submitted, and we should hear back in a couple months. Again, that was a countywide grant, so it was affecting all five entities, public safety entities in the county. So this past month, some of the training that we've done, we kinda take advantage of the cold weather to do a lot of our compliance training. So, in any, any day, we trained for two hours in a four-hour window, calls permitting. So some of the classes that we had were lockout-tagout, confined space entry, bloodborne pathogens, our SCBA care and use, preventing and reporting sexual harassment, and HIPAA training. So the other training that we did this month was instant safety officer, hazmat incident command, hazmat photoionization detector, and mayday, calling a mayday while in our SCBA maze, which Alderman Arivolo has experienced our SCBA maze, correct? So, other than that, that completes the fire department update, unless you guys have any questions.
Questions for Captain? All right. Ms. Frank? Do you have a question? You're reaching for that button. Thank you, Captain.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Okay, that brings us to item five, other. Under A, we have the groundwater use restriction ordinance for 1001, 1,001, pardon me, North State Street, Rockford Oil, Aldi, Belvidere, Illinois.
Mr. Mayor, this comes as a request to the council from the Rockford Oil Company, who previously operated a site at, where's the current Aldi store? That site has been involved in environmental remediation for a very long time at this point. And as many of the council are familiar with, in environmental remediation, because we've done ourselves on a voluntary basis, the holy grail is what's called an NFR letter, No Further Remediation Letter. And that holy grail, the NFR, makes the property much more marketable, it'll get your mortgages and loans on the property, and also allows the owner, in this case, the prior owner, to take the next step to closing out the cleanup process. To get an NFR letter, typically, the EPA requires several things. One, of course, is a cleanup of that contamination, which can be cleaned up. The second part is usually some kind of an environmental control, often was called a cap. The cap is, in the case, for example, a leaf building, we're using the existing concrete on the site as the cap, and we're also having to put in clean fill and things like that. The third aspect that they put in place is what's called an institutional control. That is an ordinance in the nature of the one that's being proposed. That ordinance will usually prohibit the use of water within the geographic area around the site for potable water. In other words, you can't drill a well, drink the water. Currently, the city of Belvidere already has an ordinance on the books that prohibits any new private well anywhere in the city. EPA, to get that institutional control in place, usually requires, and they're asking for it in this case, a site-specific potable water prohibition. And so if you look in Exhibit A of the ordinance which they proposed, there's a heavy black line that does not show up very well on my map, but it is there, that shows where we would not be able to put a potable well in the future if we adopt this ordinance. Obviously, no new private wells can go in, and I did check with Public Works before coming before you, and we have no public wells planned there either. Attorney, I'm gonna kill Michael, your last name, I apologize, Yespero? Yespero? Who represents the prior owner, the Rockford Oil Company is present, so if you have any questions, he can step forward and answer those for you.
You can go up to the microphone if you'd like, sir. And welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Drelle, I appreciate that. I don't have much to add, other than to say that we're at the very near end of this process here, and we expect that IEP will be issuing their NFR letter mid-March, and that the full closeout with respect to the property and the prior owner will happen by the end of March. There is some time sensitivity with respect to an escrow that remains with respect to the current owner, Aldi. At the time that the property was sold many years ago, my client, Rockford Oil, entered into an escrow agreement with Aldi, so that there would be funds set aside for cleanup purposes. And there are some funds that remain in that escrow that will be distributed to an estate at this point, because there are no living shareholders at the end of March. And we'd like to avoid a double taxation event by getting this NFR letter, which we understand is forthcoming, and one of the things that IEP is requiring is the site-specific ground use ordinance, which is why we're here this evening. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have. Yes, sir.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Marcia.
So, this ordinance is, basically, this site has been cleaned up already, and will continue to be monitored by the EPA. We're only saying that there is no well there, you know, in this vicinity, and there cannot be any in the future, correct?
Actually, what we're saying is there will not be one in the future.
Okay, so, we don't know if there's already one in existence in that area?
My understanding is there's not.
I don't believe there is, but if there was, this would not necessarily prohibit them from continuing to use it. It would prohibit them from replacing it, but my understanding is there are no wells in the area. And Brent, Brent is shaking his head in the affirmative.
Okay, thank you.
So, are we looking for a motion in a second?
I believe Alderman Snow had a question.
So, at this point, Aldi's does, or whatever entity Aldi's is part of owns the property, this is just a way of finally cleaning up the escrow money to, on your guys' end, so that everybody frees all that fundage up and everything. And then for Mr. Drelle, this just keeps us, as a city, from us putting a potable well in there, because we already have ordinance prohibiting everybody else from putting a potable well in the city.
That is correct. And, Mr. Mayor, your previous question, yes, what we'd be looking for is a motion to advance the ordinance prohibiting the use of groundwater as a potable water supply in the vicinity of 1,001 North State Street to the full city council for approval.
They're moved. I have a motion by Snow, second by Frank.
I'll second.
Frank, and by Arivolo, question by Frank.
I was just gonna say, I'm reading also that some of the contaminants are coming from the orchid cleaning, dry cleaning?
That was all part of the same plume, cleanup site at one point, and there was an ordinance passed, I think back in 2012, site-specific to that old, that old cleaners, that's part of the larger plume.
Right. Well, I'm just wondering if we do anything for the other one that's over on Gloyd Road, you know, that may have contaminants as well in the future, but that's not something that you're worried about right now.
And then you caught on to something, like, we did gloss over, or at least I did. We've already done the exact same ordinance in the same vicinity, but this is just a little bit larger area.
So we have a motion, a second. Additional questions or comments concerning the motion now on the floor? Hearing now, all those in favor of approval, will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Brereton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Bradcliffe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Arivolo?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Okay, the ordinance is approved to move on unanimously.
Thank you.
So thank you for your time tonight. Sorry I had to wait till the end. Okay, that brings us to the next item on the agenda, which is B, the IEP loan offer for the West Waste Water Treatment Plant. Director Anderson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Your Honor. Memo in your packet. We have received our loan offer from the IEP for our wastewater treatment plant water pollution control loan program project, copy of which is attached. The project does include the rehabilitation of the secondary digester and improvements to the pump room in the main equipment building. Estimated cost of $4,145,950. Estimated project start date is April 2021, with project completion scheduled for August of 2022. The IEP wastewater facilities loan interest rate is 1.35% for a period of 20 years. Estimated annual loan payment would be $237,927. We have also applied for a $750,000 DCEO grant for this project, and the required dedicated source of revenue for the IEP loan will include a sanitary sewer rate increase. Based on the estimated cost and the grant amount, the rate... the sewer portion of their bills. I would recommend approval of the I E P A loan offer and authorize the mayor to sign the loan agreement for wastewater project number L 173623.
May I have a motion without effect, please?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Arivolo, may I have a second, please? Second by Flurry. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor?
I have some questions.
Please proceed, Alderman Freeman.
Thank you. So Brent, for this loan at 1.35% for 20 years, by my calculations, comes out to $4,758,540, which is paying back $612,590 roughly in interest over 20 years, which is about $30,629 a year. So we would have to obviously budget for that. My question to you is, do we already have a loan out that we're currently paying on? And if so, when, when are we done paying on that?
We do have one existing EPA loan, 20-year loan, out there right now. Becky, when is that?
2030, 2032, 2033, something like that. I'll have to check. It's still out quite a ways.
And when that, and same requirement was in place for when we did that loan, that we had to, there was a dedicated source of funding for that loan as well, and the same parameters this time around with this loan.
Okay, so we've been paying on one loan for 10 years, and now we're going to take out another for another 20 years?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And just another note, too, as far as the rate increase goes, again, the rate increase is going to be based on the final construction cost, once that's all in, and our first payment is due 12 months after the project is complete. So theoretically, the rate increase would take effect, would be put into place at the time of project completion in order to generate the revenue needed to pay that first installment 12 months later.
Okay, but we're not voting on a rate increase at this time, right?
No, we won't have to do that until the project is done, but the council does need to acknowledge that there will be a rate increase required as part of the, as our dedicated source of being able to repay the loan, is what the I E P A will be looking for. So basically, by signing the agreement approving the loan offer, then you will be obligating a loan increase of some sort to make sure we can make that payment.
Okay, thanks for clarifying that.
Alderman Porter?
Okay, I have two, a couple of questions here. Just to be clear, I think I know the answer to this, but for the public, this increase is also, this is in addition to that stormwater tax that they're going to be looking for eventually here, that's correct?
This is completely separate, has nothing to do at all with stormwater. This is strictly for the sewer improvement.
Just wanted to make that clear. So it seems like, from what I can tell, it almost looks like we have the money to do this project without the loan, and it seems like it would make more sense to use the money that we have for this instead of getting a loan, wouldn't it? And, you know, paying this big loan off over the period of time? And also, let's see, the other question was, well, I guess, just go ahead and answer that, please.
So you really don't have the money for this one? So this is a water sewer project. So your water sewer fund balance at the end of January was $5,340,000. So that's the entire balance for water and sewer, which is what this would come out of. This isn't general fund money. So this would have to be water and sewer.
Yeah.
Correct, but it would have to come out of what he has in water and sewer, which is the $5,340. So you would not want to use, you would not want to use everything that's sitting in the water and sewer fund to pay for this project. That would leave him nothing for, for any other projects and to operate.
Right, so it's, it would be basically spending all your reserves down to zero, so that's why we're going, especially with the loan rate of 1.35%. It's awful reasonable cost for that, those funds over that period of time for doing the project.
What some of the aldermen may not realize, some of you I'm sure do, but some may not know, our water and sewer system is organized under Division 139 of the Illinois Municipal Code, which has very specific operation requirements, and one of that is, is completely separate from the other city funds. And you operate completely out of those funds, you don't use general fund money for water and sewer. There are possibilities of loaning money back and forth a little bit, but those are for only one year, and they got to pay them back right away. So you can't look at general fund money to be used for water and sewer purposes for those kinds of things. And that's one of the reasons why it looks like you have a lot of money in reserves for it, but in reality, you don't.
Alderman Snow?
So we can't transfer out to water and sewer? Is that what you're saying?
General fund money cannot go to water and sewer. There are some very rare examples where you've been able to do, not the city of Belvidere, but other cities, effectively a six-month or one-year loan to float one of the funds for a short period of time, but the statute required repayment immediately after that.
Yeah, it's through your audit, it's called a proprietary fund. It's its own business, it's its own entity, basically, separate from the general fund. So, for example, I mean, we're allowed to bill water and sewer for their own expenses, such as part of the salaries, things like that, but yeah, we're not supposed to be moving money for projects back and forth.
Alderman Snow?
So, and again, I assume this is why, when we do the expenditures every month, you'll see general funds and water and sewer funds are separate items listed separately, because they're such large amounts that go in and out. The other is that still, even with this kind of an increase, which could be at least a year away from occurring, is we're still, as far as water and sewer costs, still extremely cost-effective compared to other communities.
Yes, as we talked about at the last meeting when we went through the Public Works budget, this rate increase is over and above what we talked about at the last meeting as well, and those rate increases just for O and M purposes and where we were at. But yeah, even with, if you want, if combining all the rate increases that have been talked about so far, we will still be one of the most reasonable rates in the area, entire state. So we've been fortunate for a very long time to be able to manage to keep our rates as reasonable as we possibly can for the residents.
Yes, Alderman Porter?
Okay, so that brings up another question. So you, you say this rate increase is separate from the one that we talked about due to less water usage, then? And then I also have one other question.
Yes, so this would be in addition to, this proposed sewer rate increase for this specific project, repayment would be in addition to what we talked about during my presentation on the water and sewer budgets, to make up the projected shortfalls in both of those budgets.
Okay, so if we get this $750,000 grant, will we still need to do an increase in the, for this project?
Yes, and that's why the range, that's what makes up the difference in the range between the 19 cents and the 24 cents, represents that $750,000 cost. Again, all we have to work on so far is the engineer estimates for the project. Well, I take that back, we have a bid, we have the bid for the construction part, we don't have the final cost yet to go through, which is what the final loan amount will be based upon, which will then require, let you know what the rate increase is going to be needed in order to cover that final, what our loan, projected loan payment will be.
Okay, I have a question. Apparently Alderman Freeman came up with a different loan payment and a different total amount. Do you know why that is?
I double-checked the numbers. Then my, the, the total, the 237, I think, is the revised amount based on the actual construction cost, but I can double-check them.
Okay, please do. Any additional questions or comments? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion currently on the floor, will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Arivolo?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Motion is approved unanimously. Thank you. Next, we'll go to item C, Rock River Watershed Group invoice wastewater treatment plant, N A R P, NARP.
Thank you, Your Honor. Again, memo in your packet. Attached to the memo is initial invoice from the Rock River Watershed Group for developing the nutrient assessment reduction plan, which is our NARP as required by our MPDS discharge permit for the wastewater treatment plant. I would recommend approval of the invoice from the Rock River Watershed Group and the amount of $5,000 for our first payment for development of our NARP. This work will be paid for from line item 615820, 6195. As you may recall, during the budget presentation, it was a new line item created specifically for this purpose, so it'll be a, it'll show up as a negative there, because we didn't budget it for it in our current fiscal year, but going forward, it will be, have its own line item for this work.
Of note, it also says on page two of this handout that $5,000 will be deducted from the first year's dues payment due June 2021. Can you elaborate on that?
Yeah, so where we're at right now, as far as developing the NARP, we have sent out statements of interest to area consultants to assist the group with the NARP development. That'll be probably the major cost expense, at least initially, and we've got those responses back. We are meeting this, this Wednesday to review those responses, and then to come to a consensus on who we're going to negotiate with. Once we have completed those negotiations and have an agreement, then we will be able to further define what our contribution on an annual basis will be as far as for funding the work activities required to develop the NARP. As you may recall, we have, the city council has approved us becoming a member of this watershed group. I think if, I think there's probably 11 other entities that we are in partnership with to complete this project.
So may I have a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Snow, may I have a second, please?
Second.
Second by Arivolo. Questions? Snow?
So Brent, what exactly does this do besides create a group together to come up with this? What exactly does it facilitate in our sewer plant activities in the long run?
Basically, it's a watershed, so there's a study that has to be done to our discharge. Every wastewater treatment plant within the state of Illinois, this requirement is now part of their MPDS permit for discharging into the waters of the state. So it's basically addresses nutrient loadings, what's coming out, what's being discharged from the plant to the rivers. So there has to be some background information established on what's in the river now currently. We do, there's monitoring required above stream and downstream from our wastewater treatment plants, as all, as well as all of the wastewater treatment plants. The watershed group will be specifically looking at that portion of the Kishawaki River and the Rock River combined. And then once those baselines are established, it'll look at what your influence is and what you're discharging through each of the wastewater treatment plants, and what methods and procedures can be changed or implemented within each of the plants to lower those discharge limits. We've already done, gone through a bit of the process for our phosphorus study that was done by Baxter and Woodman here recently, so the results of that study will be forwarded to the watershed group for their use in implementing and coming up with the plan, which has to be submitted and approved by I E P A.
So a lot of studying is mostly what this is going to do, and then hopefully come up with a mitigation, if there's needed to be mitigation.
Yeah, it's, it's all based on, on proposed, what F of limits they're going to be, that will be applying towards what we can discharge, what our limits will be for discharging, and basically how each of the plants can, can meet those limits, as well as then what those, once those are implemented, then what reaction that has, what impact that has on the discharge streams. And you basically do that through monitoring and testing.
Additional questions or comments? Alderman Porter?
Yeah, forgive me if I, you said this and I missed it, but, so do we know what the total payments are going to be, then, to dues each year?
No, not yet, not until after we have an agreement in place with the consultant. That'll be the major drive, cause factor going forward, initially through the planning process. So once we have that information, then we have all of the, it's going to be paid for, divided up equally amongst all the parties based on the amount of the number of sewer users within each entity. So those numbers have already been generated throughout for the watershed group, and now we just got to determine what our costs are going to be to make that calculation. But I estimate it in the budget, I included $30,000.
Additional questions or comments concerning the motion now on the floor? Hearing not all those in favor of approval, will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Arivolo?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Motion is approved unanimously. Brings us to item D.
Our 2020 annual pretreatment report preparation for the wastewater treatment plant. Again, memo in your packet. There's a work order attached from Baxter and Woodman for their assistance in helping us put that together and submitting that report. It includes an evaluation of the monitoring data for the pretreatment program, as well as the evaluation of the metals and organics data, and completing the pretreatment report forms, quality assistance, quality control for the final report, and submittal to U S E P A by April 28th of 2021. I would recommend approval of the work order from Baxter and Woodman, and the amount not to exceed $4,000 to complete this project. It will be paid for from line item 615820, 6190.
May I have a motion to approve, please?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Arivolo, may, may I have a second, please? Second by Flurry. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor? Yes, Alderman Porter?
Is this report something that our people can't do in house? Basically, it requires an engineer?
If we had probably additional manpower, we could probably work through it, but there's some, again, with the quality control measures and some of the other evaluations that were, have been done, traditionally, we have outside consultant help us with those.
Yes, Alderman. Frank?
Is this going to be a $4,000 annual fee?
Actually, this year is cheaper than last year. Last year's was not to exceed 5,500, so this year's a $1,500 reduction. Yes.
Additional questions or comments concerning the motion now on the floor? Hearing not all those in favor of approval, will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Arivolo?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Motion is approved unanimously, which then brings us to item E, I believe.
Again, memo in your packet, vehicle repair for Street Department truck number 2023. It's a 2007 Intermont
Motion is approved unanimously, which then brings us to item E, I believe.
Again, memo in your packet, vehicle repair for Street Department truck number 2023. It's a 2007 International 10-yard dump truck that needs new hydraulic controls because the existing controls cannot be repaired. We have received two cost estimates to have this work done, the low one being from Benel Industries, the amount of $10,756. I would recommend approval of the quote from Benel Industries to replace the hydraulic controls on truck 2023 in the amount of $10,756. This work will be paid for from Street Department, line item 0153106020, equipment repair.
Motion to approve by Frank, second by Snow. Questions, comments, or further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval, will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Avrillo?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Motion is approved unanimously, which then brings us to the last item on the agenda, which is item F.
Again, memo in your packet, extension of the intergovernmental agreement for annual painted pavement marking program. This is a partnership with the city of Rockford and also includes the village of Cherry Valley. Basically, all three of us going together for a single contract to do our painted pavement markings, which results in a price savings for everybody. In fact, it's been up to almost a 50% reduction for us as far as our pricing goes in the unit prices paid. The contract agreement provides for two one-year extensions. I would recommend approval of a one-year extension of our intergovernmental agreement with the city of Rockford for our annual painted pavement marking program. This work is paid for from our public benefit funds.
Motion approved. Alman Frank, may I have a second, please? Okay, Flurry. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval, will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Avrillo?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Motion is approved unanimously. Brings us to the end of our agenda this evening. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Frank, second, please. By Porter. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Have a pleasant evening.